The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diana.
Nicole.
Larry Seer.
Mark Seeger.
Bill Wilson.
Eric.
Dave Campbell.
Here.
Hi Gary here.
Here.
Beena Shane.
Here. Oh, okay, so the first thing we're gonna do is open the roll-off contracted.
We're gonna receive one.
Finally got one. We don't take long, kinda like Christmas for me.
So this contract was for our roll-off service for the borough. It was for the next five years. Happy to report that S and S is the only bidder. They have been providing our service for the last two years. The pricing has remained the same and will do so for the next five. So I'd recommend the council to approve S and S as our roll-off service for the next five years.
At a constant price for the next five years.
And that was our only bid? It was our only bid.
Very good. Is everything in the bid in order?
Yeah, we pretty much, Frank, we just, we made this bid very user-friendly. There's only four places to put numbers. It's for the three dumpster sizes and other three roll-off sizes and our moving the boxes around for the borough.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid pending staff review that everything's in order with the bid.
All second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Scott, how much was it bid?
What size box would you like?
For me?
It's by the size of the...
Oh, you do each one by the size of the box?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
So it's... We don't pay unless they move a box.
Move a box, so it's hard to say what it would be every year, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I could tell you like year-to-date. Year-to-date, we have paid them $36,463 on revenue of $82,224. Okay?
Thank you.
Hearing a person's presence, Mr. Maurey. Come on up and, or stand up where you are and tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Yeah, about the new access area down there. You took the walkway, you put the walkway in, I have no comments about the walkway. But you put the stones in, so now you went from 20 boats parking to four. And I can tell you right now, if this isn't resolved by then, by summer, tempers will fly, the police will be called, tickets will be wrote. Solutions, move the stone on the other side, take the gate or move it up, move parking up there. But you can't, you can't have four access people. You know, you got, here's your sons, you want to take them fishing. Well, you get down to the access, you're not parking. So his son's gonna cry, you know? He gonna park somebody in, they're going fishing. Yeah, the tempers are gonna fly. I just hope some kind of solution's solved here. I'd rather have it solved now before the problems escalate into physical maybe, but it...
Can we get your address just for the record, Randy?
My address?
Please.
218 North Wall Street.
I can tell you that Mr. Barlett was down there with his boat, correct Bob?
Yes, we took the...
And we are looking at that and the stones can be moved, so that's...
Well, and Scott, I've already talked to him about the, when you come up out too. He said he's gonna try to eliminate a couple of them parking spots to make the turn there. But all you have to do is just give them stones on the other side, we pull in the way we used to, and you'll have enough room for 15, 20 boats again. Problem solved.
I appreciate it.
Or take the gate, move it up above, nothing to park up there, people will walk, be either way. But I don't want to wait till April, next.
Well, and I don't think that that's gonna happen. We're working on it now to see how many stones we need to move and what needs to be done. So there's ample parking there for everybody to enjoy that as they have in the past, so...
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Yon, you're next, I believe.
I got a whole bunch of thank yous for tonight. We recently held our toy drive through Seven Mountains Jeeps. We usually hold a one-day event. This year, we moved it into the Festival of Ice for two nights. We did 770 toys approximately. I want to thank Dave Clemmons, his department's been with us every year on it. Bob Barlett always hooks us up on the other end with the fire companies because we go from Sweet Frog in Burnham to Lewis Town. And their departments organize having all the intersections blocked on the way in. There's 40-plus vehicles, it's a little tough to keep together in those couple of mouths. Plus, the kids like coming out, looking at the trucks and the cars and everything else. And I want to thank the community on that. Last year, we did do 600. Our goal was 1,000 this year. We didn't hit it because of the weather that Saturday. Mayor Bargo, I saw her at the Ice Festival, she stopped in to say hello. Venus stopped to say hello. If I missed anyone else that stopped at our thing at the square that night, I'm sorry, I couldn't be everywhere to see everyone. The fire police, they do an awesome job for us. Thanks Bob and Clemmons for that one. And then another thing happened. Seven Mountains Jeeps got a call from two people in the borough that are super giving. And they're not here, so I'm gonna say their names, Steve and Lisa Nutson. They had an object that needed moved to decorate for Christmas. We know how they like to decorate. So we, I had no clue what we were up against. About a dozen of us showed up, including Dave Campbell. And it was a matter of moving a small camper from the back alley around to the front, but get it in an odd position. We didn't know if we was gonna have to winch this thing in or not. But those two people were so humble, they never asked for help. And I think everybody in this room, for what they've done for the community over the years, should send them a Christmas card. You know, it's just a little something. And I'm gonna tell you something about our vice president. They sort of took advantage of us being there, they did not. We were there, you know what I mean? Dave was on that roof like now putting stuff on for him. So I just want to thank you guys for your involvement in the community. I don't think I missed anything on here. I don't know if the mayor, Venus, Zeke was there, he's one of our jeepers. If any of you guys want to say anything, Dave, Bob, but I want to thank you all for what you did. Next year, we're gonna try to hit our 1,000 mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, it's wonderful things you do for the community. Thank you, Dave, I didn't even call him.
No, see?
I'm not on the agenda, I guess, my name's not there, but my...
Well, what's your name and address, please, just for the record?
My name is Russell Platt and I live at 670 Valley Street.
Okay.
The property next to me, and my address is 670 Valley Street, by the way, of 911.
Okay.
It used to be 674. Okay, but now, the property next to me is 672 and 674, has been condemned for 10 years. Roof's caving in, front wall on second floor is bulging out towards Valley Street. Front porch post is caving in toward, back toward Central Avenue. I fight off rats, mice, pigeons, bats, and snakes for the last 10 years. And it went through sheriff's sale, free and clear sale, and it's up for sheriff's sale again. Sidewalk is a disaster in this property. And I have to go after the building inspector every year since that place was condemned to have the grass mowed two to three times a year, maybe, if I'm lucky. I've had it. You've probably seen my postings on Facebook of the signs I have in my front yard. And something has to be done, and done now. 10 years, I think I've been patient long enough. And it's structural damage, the place is not capable of being fixed up, remodeled, or any of that, it's done. It needs removed. And I would like an answer to that at this time, if I could, and what you plan on doing about it.
I don't know if I can address what we plan on doing. I can tell you that we are well aware of the issue and have been talking to Rex. Rex, am I wrong in that that was supposed to go for sale tonight?
Tonight it goes up for a free and clear, or judicial sale.
Tonight?
Yeah. Now, I did request and close. But the finance committee took the money I have budgeted out of the budget for demolition for next year. Now, it's in there yet this year.
Yes. So I know that the issue is being looked at. I think the thought was to wait and see what happens tonight?
Yeah, well, I've waited and seen for, going to be 11 years in February. I've had enough.
I empathize and sympathize with you.
And I am not, I am not gonna remove the signs until the machinery are there to tear it down. And I will tell you this, if it doesn't happen, the publicity's gonna get a lot worse. And I'm dead serious. Rex didn't think I was serious when I told him I gave him 30 days to get something started. He thinks I'm serious now.
I, like I said, I understand, I do. It's just a matter of figuring this out and who's gonna be responsible for what.
Well, I hope someone soon does because I don't think any of you would have had the patience I've had to live next to it for 11 years. And the mayor wouldn't either.
I agree. Well, I agree for myself and to be fair to my folks, but... Can we get your phone number, Mr. ...? Or do you have his phone number?
He has my phone number.
Okay.
And he says exactly where I live.
So that we can follow up with you, okay?
And I did call him and left a message, but he never returned.
I never return a call because I'm tired of having smoke blowed up you know where.
I do, I do. We will get back to you and follow up, okay? Thank you for your patience and for coming and addressing those concerns, I appreciate it. Okay, consent agenda. Items are there. Is there anything that anyone would like taken out for?
Yes, we have to remove the December 6th financing minutes because there were changes that were requested.
I saw those.
In addition to, Mr. Barry had some more changes, and I was not able to finish them.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
We'll bring that up for the next conference.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Anyone else, anything you'd like to pull out and discuss?
I'd like to ask one other question. How long do you feel that I should be patient to see what's gonna happen with this?
Can't answer that question because I'm not informed enough to know how long the process is going to take, okay? I can tell you that we'll find out tomorrow what happened and go from there. I don't want to answer your question based on partial information.
Please inform me soon.
I certainly will, I certainly will. When I know something, you'll know something, Mr. Platt. If I don't...
What do you think that, can I ask you, Mr. Platt, what do you think the borough's responsibility should be in this case?
Well, since it went to sheriff's sale for back taxes, and this is the second time, and you're not receiving any income from that. And there should be ordinances on the books that this should not have gone to this extent. If the property owner, see, okay, originally, when the fire happened, the one guy had no insurance. The other guy that owned the side next to me had insurance. He took the insurance money and he ripped out the furnace and left the property go for back taxes, okay? Then it went to free and clear sale because nobody, everybody that looked at it for the sheriff's sale knew it wasn't fixable, so they wouldn't buy it. We went to free and clear sale, somebody bought a pig in the pokey not knowing what she was buying. Okay, she bought it. Now she finds out that it's not fixable or whatever, and she's kind of stuck with it, so to say. So she lets it go for back taxes too. The borough has to have some kind of mechanism to stop that. There has to be ordinances or whatever on the books to not let that kind of stuff happen. Because properties like on Shaw Avenue when that fire happened, within weeks, they were tore down. The only other property I know of that took that kind of time to get it tore down was the one on Pine Street.
North Wall?
No, no, North Wall Street, yeah, North Wall Street. It was an apartment building.
Right.
If you have to take every property that that homeowner or that landlord or whoever owns that bought that property, so be it, or put a lien against them and tear it down, I don't care at this point.
All right, Mark, what are, what are our options?
A lot of things that are, you know, you can do potentially. You do have ordinances for maintenance and a person can be cited under those ordinances. I mean, the borough does now have a fire escrow ordinance. Some cases where there's insurance money, it does have to be escrowed.
But it's a statute that...
Right. You know, the borough can condemn the property, the borough can tear the property down after going through the appropriate procedures and file a lien against it. Borough can wait for particular taxes and be, the tax is sold and the new owners problem to bring it up.
So Rex, the sale tonight is free and clear?
Well, it's a judicial sale.
So what's that mean?
It's a back taxes sale.
Which for the taxes.
There's two, there's two tax sale, judicial sale and a free and clear.
It's not a free and clear sale.
So this is, if somebody pays the back taxes?
This is back taxes.
Yep.
Nobody's gonna buy, pay the taxes because it's not salvageable.
Correct. And the previous owner, the information was, her name was misspelled. I took her to court and I lost because it was spelled, not on my part, on the county's part. So I can't pay her to court again because that looks, because her name's spelled one way and all the county paperwork's a different way.
Is that true? I'm sorry, what was that?
The spelling that we talked about.
Right, right, yeah.
To pick up for her out of court.
Yeah, Rex said he lost it, court, the entry, discrepancy between the two.
So we've been taking steps, it's just there seems to be a wall every time we get to the next step.
And it seems that way to me. I mean, I've been fighting this for 11 years now. This is, you know, at first, I just complained about mowing the grass. I figured, oh, okay, somebody's gonna do this or buy it, fix it up, tear it down, whatever. But it's went way past that. And I'm getting ready to retire now in January, so I don't need this. I don't want the property, I've got enough to take care of my own. And I'll have all the time in the world to make an issue out of this if it has to come to that. I don't want it to come to that.
I was gonna say...
I didn't want it to come to this. Because a guy I went to school with used to be on your council, Greg O'Donnell, I talked to him. I talked to Otis Rides. Nothing happened any, either way. And I've been talking to Rex off and on for 11 years and nothing takes place. You know, I don't know what else I'm supposed to do, other than make an issue out of it and shame all of you, which I don't want to do.
The thing is, sir, that you have to understand, it's not, it's not something that any member of council can just say, we have to do this and...
I understand that.
I mean, you can...
But I will guarantee you, if you have to live next door to it, and you had to live next door for 10 years and fight off rats, mice, snakes, bats, pigeons, that you would be telling all your acquaintances here, all your comrades, to get something done.
I absolutely agree with you.
And that's what I'm asking, and I want a result.
And what I'm gonna say is, I absolutely agree with you, but I would be fighting the same fight, no matter what my position is. I mean, there's...
You can, I understand, you can't say yourself, okay, tear it down today. I understand that.
I mean, it's a burden on you.
I understand that, but I think you would get a lot faster cooperation than I'm, than I thought.
I, I don't agree with that.
Well, I do, I've lived here all my life in this town, I know how it works.
Well, I can, we'll give it a try.
Being a secret, one example, you did bring up North Wall Street. Council at the time used CDVG funds to tear that building down, okay?
Yep.
Which was all well and good, the problem went away. But now, the borough is saddled with a piece of property we can't sell because the only thing that is on there is section 8...
Now, I'm gonna ask you another question.
Can I finish?
Okay.
The only thing that can be put on there is section 8 housing. Nobody wants to buy a lot or build a section 8 house up on North Wall Street.
It's not on North Wall.
No, he's talking about the former...
I'm talking about the former tower.
Okay.
So that, we used government funds to tear it down. And now we're stuck on a piece of property we can't do anything with.
Right.
So it's a, it's a real conundrum, as I said.
Yes, it is, and I can sympathize with that from point. But here's my other point. The borough takes in building permit fees, the borough takes in inspection fees, which are a joke. Where's all that money going? And it's more than just me that paid it. So I know, and I paid 500 bucks to have my garage put up. To be able to put my garage up. So that money's going somewhere, I don't know where it's going. And, you know, really, it probably doesn't matter to me, but I would think that money should be used for this kind of situations. And that's my, that's my opinion. I mean, you can agree or disagree or whatever, I don't, you know, I don't know. And maybe you have different reasons, and that's, that's all well and fine, and we have the right to disagree with each other. And I'm trying, by darnness, to be civil as I am because I'm really pissed at this point.
Can we raise a little bit louder?
And I know you don't understand this, but there's a certain legally-wise, certain, certain progression of how we can go about this.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of properties in the borough that are in a sad situation.
Yeah, but let me give, let me give you another, another scenario, okay? You say you're stuck with the property, the one up there on North Wall, okay? If you tear this property down, the parking, the parking along the street on Valley Street, on both sides of the street, is congested in that street. That street's really not wide enough for the amount of traffic that it gets, okay? Why not use that as off-street parking and stop parking in that block along the street?
We can definitely look at that option.
And that, that's just a suggestion on my part. I mean, whether it flies, whether it don't fly, whatever, don't make no difference to me because I have a garage and I park off-street anyway. But because the state owns the wall in front of my house. And they're my next target because that wall's gonna fall into my yard and the road's starting to cave in. And that's a good thing. And I don't have to, because my brother-in-law lives building next to me on the side towards town. And he had them up there two years ago, they took pictures of it and never said anything. That was all they did. And now, all that runoff off the road is running down through my yard and in my basement. Luckily, I have a sump pump, and it's running into my brother-in-law's basement who has classic cars and he ain't too appreciative of that.
We will get back to you, Mr. Platt.
I look forward to it.
Back to consent agenda, I think we had a second? No? Did we have a motion or no? No, okay. Got off the funnel there. So, other than the things, is there anything else from December 6th that anyone wanted to be pulled out for this sector? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion, I have a... I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the regular, do you have the... Treasurers report?
Well, so we received a request for exoneration at a, for a water leak from 109 Third Street. The consumption was 50,000 gallons and the average consumption is 23. So we're looking for council's approval to exonerate 35,000 gallons at $226.01. And it looks like what happened is the, there was a, the hose filled, was left on outside, if I'm correct, Rex?
Correct. Garden hose was left on outside.
Yes, garden hose was left on outside. And we need the council's approval to exonerate that.
The water didn't enter the water?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. May, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Diana.
Yep.
Cut it? Rex?
Last month, there was 39 different violations. Permit-wise, we issued 26 zoning permits this year, last month compared to 22 last year. We only issued four sidewalk permits this year compared to 12 last year. Which brought in $2,469.95 in zoning fees and $120 in sidewalk fees. Year-to-date improvements in the... Year-to-date improvements in the borough was $8,070,914. And there's notes on the letters again last month.
Thank you, Rex. Bob?
Okay, in the month of November, Borough Fire Department ran 14 alarms plus medical assist. Most of everything was wired and red stove fire, several furnace malfunctions over investigation, several motor vehicle accidents. On Thanksgiving Day, all three stations from the department went out to Dairy Township to assist with a structure fire. They spent close five hours out there. My deputy chief went on to fire department. I stayed in town. We had two transfer companies come into the roofing station to stand by in case anything directly incidented down. Uh, last Tuesday and Wednesday, both ladder trucks were out for their aerial certifications. Truck 14 from the city, truck 11 from United, both passed their certifications. And the written report will be in within a week or so. Uh, the borough's pocket truck was over there also, and I believe it's getting the sticker replaced in Austin. I'll have a full report here put at stake here. Also, last night, we had a fireman's meeting, record quarter remaining. We had election of new officers who will take over January the 1st. I think these guys are pretty good to work with. We're discussing ways to purchase the last 15 sets of year or the next time of year. So I can give you a full report of that after the next fireman's meeting. Any glasses for me? Good?
Thanks, Bob. And I think that we're going to, under a new and unconditioned business, there is the approval of the resolution for the fire company's equipment. You know, move that up just so that Ryan has worked the double and would like to go home and get rescued for his next shift, so... Do we have that resolution? I don't know if I had the opportunity to read the resolution.
I haven't even seen it.
It's 2018-55, right?
Yep.
It was on the safe.
Do we have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
I have a discussion here.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to know what the purpose of the resolution is.
The bank requested a resolution from the council.
For what reason?
Jason?
Basically, we just wanted to make sure council was on board with the purchase of the new truck for the city.
Make sure the council was on board at that time.
But that's not what the resolution says.
I saw a line at the bank, and she told me what she wanted from that resolution. So what the resolution states is that the borough-
Yeah.
Uh, acknowledges City Hook and Ladder's purchase of the 2019 Rescue E1. Uh, the Borough Council may, but is not obligated, to allocate 22.5 funding annually to City Hook and Ladder. And three- the third point is the Borough Council of the Borough of Lewis Town is not and will not be held financially responsible for the payment alone. So I did talk to her directly there. And we- I read off to her to make sure I had the correct ones.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Second. If we're not financially responsible, why do we have to do this?
We don't have to do it. It's just a measure of faith, I think, for the bank that we acknowledge that, yes, they're going ahead.
I think probably the main thing for the bank is too, that you're saying that, you know, you may, although you're not obligated, to allocate funds to pay towards this.
You ready to carry over, Jason?
What's that?
Is that your understanding of what you need?
Yes.
What you read?
Yes.
And again, you want to determine if council was on board with them barring the engine?
Yeah, basically what Diane had.
But that's not what the resolution says.
Well, it is. We acknowledge-
Knowledge and that they're gonna buy it.
Yeah, but on board means approval, does it not?
Whatever's on that resolution. I didn't- I mean, Alana's the one to talk to.
Yeah. Again, I'm just asking why you need it and what the purpose of it is.
Yeah.
Why are we supposed to have that report from Fire Department? At the January meeting. At the January meeting, Bill. He wanted to come up and present it personally.
The auditor doing that report, you mentioned Bill.
What's that?
The auditor that is doing that report regarding consolidation. Um, somewhere along the line, he was brought into the loop regarding the purchase of the new apparatus and asked for an opinion. And he did send us an opinion that states that it would be in the best interest of the Fire Department.
I'll make that.
In the borough-
I'll make a Fire Department.
In the borough of Lewis Town. Sorry. To move forward with their purchase.
Will you have a copy of that letter?
I want to read the last line, Bill. The very, very end of the letter. The very last- the very last thing at the- in the opinion.
So if we do this, does it actually mean that council could later vote to give them money to help pay for it?
Council can do whatever they want.
We can do that anyway.
But that's not what they're saying.
I know we do it anyway.
But all this says is that we may or may not allocate that 22.5.
What's that? There's no obligation or our part on this resolution.
Have a vote? All those in favor, say aye. We do have a motion and a second is-
Okay.
Let's do a roll call vote. How about that?
Well, it's a resolution.
We don't have to for a resolution.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
It's news and need. Okay.
But we will, because we will. Frank Barrier?
No.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Mark Seaver?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
No.
Dan Shae?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, now, Mayor, sorry, didn't need to step over your butt. Did you get your report?
I just wanted to thank everyone that participated in all the events that have happened over the last couple of weeks. We had great attendance for the bus stop dedication, for the trail dedication, the ICE Festival, and the Christmas Parade. For anybody that helped in any way, you know, any way by even attending or in other ways, I'd like to publicly thank you. They were all wonderful events. The ICE Festival was magical, as far as I was concerned. See that many people downtown and, I mean, there was thousands of people. And it was really, really, very nice. And I got a lot of good comments from a lot of people in the area and out of the area, actually. There were people there from out of state that I talked to, saw one of them, and they were just amazed by the whole thing. So I'd like to publicly thank everybody. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Keith Cummins?
Okay, for November, we had 211 calls for service. Just to give you an indication of, uh, last year, we had 296 calls for service in November and October for last year. So our calls are way down this year, at least for this month and the last couple of months. So hopefully that's an indication that crime is on the decline. We'll see if that translates. 35 traffic citations issued, 20 non-traffic, and 180 parking tickets. Majority of those were street sweeper tickets, 169 of them. The officers participated in all the events over the last month, the ICE Festival, Christmas Parade, and as Tim Yon mentioned earlier, the toy drive to the Jeep Club. And we thank Tim and his group for everything they do and for giving us the opportunity to participate in some of these events. Upcoming this Friday, the 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., there's our full recruiter at the Giant on Dorcas Street. So if anybody has an opportunity to come down there to contribute, we appreciate it. All the proceeds go to Mother Hubbard's Cover and Illumina Center. We have a pretty good response for that. So we take monetary donations or through donations, whatever you'd like to give. And just a reminder, Police Supervisor Door, we still have two openings on that. We have received several applications. And I think on our next meeting on the 20th, we're planning to try to fill those positions. So if anybody else is interested, make sure you get an application and get it back to the mayor or Scott or somebody from the borough, and we can look at those applications. That's all I have.
Thank you. Rec Board review of the minutes? We didn't have any correcting. Okay. For our solicitor, that would be you, Mr. Nade.
Tonight, the sidewalk ordinance is up for consideration for adoption was advertised. This ordinance involves changing the sidewalk ordinance around a little bit to make it clear that every meter of land which abuts a borough's street or a state highway or a sidewalk or curb are required or permitted, and on which a sidewalk or curb is constructed as of January 1, 2014, shall maintain the sidewalks and curbs on or abutting such land in good and safe condition in compliance with the borough's ordinance. So... It is, as I said, it's ready for consideration. Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the sidewalk ordinance?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you need a roll call ordinance?
Okay, roll call. And Barrier?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Mark Seaver?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
Yes.
Dan Shae?
Yes.
I talked with Diana regarding preparing a 2019 sewer rate ordinance. I guess there's a change based on the most recent rate study to the step-one calculation. Starting next year, according to the ordinance, it would be 0 to 3,000 gallons would be 71.97, a flat rate, and the minimum rate payable. In excess of 3,000 gallons would be 71.97 plus $4.23 for each 1,000 gallons of water in excess of 3,000. The step-two calculation is set at 71.97. And those numbers are based on, as I said, the rate study done by the engineers. So I'd like approval to advertise that for adoption if it is needed.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay, I received a letter which is from Bill Gomes at the county planning office, which I forwarded to each of you. There was some discussion at the finance committee meeting the other night. I sent you the proposal from a company that's gonna be doing the study on the Internet. And what they're asking for is they're asking for is to be a cooperative effort by a lot of municipalities and a lot of entities that are gonna benefit from the study. For example, Mifflin County School District gave 2,500 to the study. Geisinger gave 2,500. Dairy 250, Wayne Township 300. Water Authority 1,000. MCIDC 1,000. Grahamville 200. Armaw 300. Brown 250. Menno 300. Oliver 300. And Union Township 300. And they're looking for us to give anywhere from 200 to 300. So I recommend that if council so chooses to give the county 250 for this Internet study. What are your wishes of council?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second for a discussion.
Discussion?
I made my viewpoint clear to other members of council that this is a county effort, which we are already paying for with our county tax dollars. And for the county to come to ask the borough for additional funding, to be paying it out of the borough's tax dollars to the county on top of what we already give them, I'm not in favor of it at all. Again, every penny that the county gets, they spend for the benefit of Mifflin County. Every penny that Lewis Town Borough gets, we spend for the benefit of our taxpayers and for the benefit of Mifflin County. For example, the rec park, the swimming pool, all the downtown, all the downtown events that happen benefit the entire county, not just the residents of the borough. However, the borough, they pay the tax dollars for that, and we do not look outside of the borough for funding for the services that we provide. And by the same token, the county has determined that this study should be done. And again, this is a county function, which is paid for by our tax dollars already. And I'm not in favor of paying additional. That's my viewpoint.
Those are good points, Frank. Any other discussion?
Yeah, they are very, very good points, very valid points. The forward momentum concerns me. I can't imagine, if these Internet providers have not spent the millions of dollars to this point to update infrastructure, what's gonna make them want to do it now? Does education get us there in terms of this study? Maybe so. I don't know. What I do know, though, is that it would be a substantial benefit to business in our county to have adequate Internet to do business on. I mean, we as borough residents, we don't really suffer individually per se or as a business, because we have the high-speed Internet in the borough that you can get in the county essentially. Other places, it's very, very- it takes a- Other places, it's very, very, it takes a very big toll on business and how businesses can do business. My employer was one of them, and I know that our company invested a great deal of time and had to seek a great deal of money to bring our Internet up to speed so that we could do business in a more efficient manner. If this study helps us get to that point, I think it's a good thing. However, what Frank has mentioned is not lost on me either.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against the study. I mean, the study needs to be done, however, that is a county function, and they determined that it is a county function.
Any other discussion? Well, we have a motion and a proper second motion, so we can take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I say aye. Okay, moving on, I finished a new business, we have the review of the boards, commissions, and authorities that are set to expire, maybe set to expire. Thanks. The question is that we need to advertise these?
Yes, the ones we wish to advertise.
Everybody's aware, does everybody have this list? But we have several vacancies, as Chief Cements had alluded to, Police Advisory Board, Training Commission, Building Appeals.
We have a few applications here for the Police Advisory Board, I was, I assumed we weren't having others.
It's down on agenda, but that's up to Mayor Barrow, I thought we were going to by what, the directive that you've given me, but that would, I mean...
We're going to discuss it at the next advisory board meeting.
We have one on the 20th, the advisory board meeting, so...
What, in December?
So we'd like those sort of blow over then.
Share with the other members.
Share with them in January. Yeah, I do have them.
Okay, do we want to advertise for the other? Will we advertise, do we advertise in the Sentinel, or do we advertise? Sentinel's so expensive, could we advertise on the website and on Facebook?
I was going to say, can we take a shot of social media and Internet first?
And save some, not that I don't want to give business to the Sentinel guys, but it is expensive, so we could go that route first. Word of mouth, y'all heard here first, so if you're friends, please come get involved. And those applications can be got at, or can be had at the Borough Hall, correct? Okay, we also have next year's yearly meeting schedules to approve, does everyone have this? So, some things to discuss, first of all, council meetings right now are being held here, I'd like to discuss whether or not we want to move this back to Borough Hall.
One of the things you'd asked me to do was to check with Matt Ward concerning what it would take to have the meetings go live.
Correct.
Matt and I had a discussion, and due to the fact that, I mean, we're virtually there, there's a, and Matt wants to make some connections with Nittany Media, but other than that, it's not going to take a lot, just a couple of switches and we're going to be able to broadcast the meetings live from Borough Hall.
As opposed to being recorded, you know, and then put on the channel and everything else, that would give everybody the opportunity to enjoy this live in stereo.
Do you know, I guess, we have that ability at Borough Hall.
We never got, we came real close and then the meetings were moved, and so we never...
Equipment's there, the connection is not there. The fiber connection is there, and the Internet connections are, just a couple links that need to be taken care of between point A and point B.
And we could make that happen?
Control could be passed off.
How, how long do you think it would take to make that happen, Matt?
Sixty days. That's a long time, I mean, maybe in 30, but I know I'm working with Nittany and their time schedules. We do.
Just a suggestion, if we could do that, I think that would be great. The other thing that I thought about is if we could change the meeting times to 5:30 to allow those individuals who work till 5:00 to perhaps attend. Again, just discussion.
What is the seating capacity at Borough Hall for the audience?
Chairs, 30.
30. We have more than that here tonight.
I think it's, I've looked at it pretty closely.
And access into the building is definitely a lot easier to, but you could set up a couple of folding chairs.
Well, the thought too, Frank, was that we could have the guys from streets and everybody rotate who comes, so that not everybody's here.
Well, granted, it's easier to have the meetings at Borough Hall, just from the standpoint of shuffling papers around, but again, I'm concerned with capacity, especially the amount of people that have been coming down here, this isn't my favorite venue either.
Yeah, same here, but...
Just putting it out there, because now's the time that we can advertise, and we wouldn't have to worry about advertising again in the future.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, my thing, me personally, I would prefer the meetings to be there, it's a, it is a better environment, but the communities, you know, seem to want them here, and that's, that's how I would have to...
People want to turn to come to meetings, which we want them to come to meetings, so...
Okay, so we could deal with the second thought I brought up about changing the meetings to 5:30. Discussion there?
I would be okay with that, I don't want it to go on once. If it gets more people here, if it gets more people in the door, I mean, that's...
Well, that's probably the biggest complaint that I hear from people, is they start till at 5:00 and I work till 5:00. I think if we make the effort, the effort's been made, and it's been on those individuals to come, but we've at least tried to accommodate that, but...
Would you want to go live here?
I don't know, how does that, I mean, are we talking, what are we talking, for me to that happen?
You have all the equipment, just needs to be moved.
But it's got to be moved every month, right?
No, you could put it in here permanently, in this room.
I don't mean to throw it, right, some of the words, but I'm going to just bring up something that we were just discussing at the finance committee concerning community center, and there is a potential issue with using this...
Yeah, that was the other thing.
...for conducting borough business, since this whole building was paid for by CDBG money. So we're waiting, we're waiting actually for, at the state level, for DCD's attorneys to get back to us on a request we'd ask about the community center, so there is the potential there that we might not have a choice.
So hold off on that.
I will.
Okay, so... Let's, let's just deal with the 5:30, and we'll wait maybe till we get an answer from the DCD attorneys. Do we want to move the public meetings till 5:30 on the second Monday of the month? Do we take a vote?
We have to, yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, I can change the time from 5:00 to 5:30.
Is that a second? I don't think anybody did over there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so there we have that part changed, Diana, it'll be 5:30, they will be the second Monday of the month, with just a couple changes, November 12th is a Tuesday because of Veterans Day, and then I think that's pretty much it, as far as the meeting schedule. That's here. The times, yes, the times for the committee meetings will change, Finance will meet the fourth Thursday at 5:30. Wait, do you want to keep it 4:30 for budgetary purposes, so then we don't have to change it again? And we wouldn't have to advertise that again?
We advertise, advertise all of it, because the whole thing...
I know, but...
What she's saying is...
We changed it to 4:30 to accommodate the budgetary...
When we hit October, it doesn't like the meetings, we want to do 5:30 for, up until October, and if from October...
Well, here's, here's what we could do, we can switch these.
But I still have to advertise it, the whole thing?
I know, I know.
Somebody want to check with the chairman and see if he's okay with that?
I will. I know he's okay with that.
Another thing I would...
And I know he's okay with that. We'll do that before the...
We won't have that issue with the long years later in the future. Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Third Thursday would work, at 4:30. That way we wouldn't run into the...
Yeah.
4:30 or the third Thursday works better than that. 5 o'clock, the third Thursday.
So when Finance is still going to forward that, on Thursday?
Yeah, it'll be 4:30, that 4:30 still works for you, correct?
For...
Finance. Or were you having to, what we had talked about, we're just getting it all on a row before we advertise this, so we have it.
Do you want to do 5:30 for most of the year until you hit the budget and go to 4:30?
Well, I think probably, probably going to be at 5:00, so much time, so 4:30.
So once you 5:00, you're in...
We've already gone through it once.
Just change it to 5:00 period, and it'll all change all year round.
Is that the third or fourth Thursday?
Fourth, yes. In-law ordinance will be the third Thursday, then, at 4:30.
We'll, we'll make sure it's advertised, once we get it all figured out. Just don't want to have to advertise again, and we ended up doing that this year, and it costs a significant penny to advertise when we make changes like that, so if we can do it now, I know everything's subject to change, the world could fall apart tomorrow, but let's hope not. Everybody's in agreement for this moment, so let's just go with it. Okay. Yes, yes, we can do that. Okay, and there have been changes made to the committees? So everybody will get a copy of the updated agenda. Diana, on your list, do you have meet dates for the EG meetings?
They're quarterly meetings, they usually fall at the same time as the fire payment, somewhere in that, we usually have ours Wednesday, I'm sorry?
It is the third Thursday.
Yeah, correct, that way, that way you have it for the Monday of the council meeting.
And I'm sorry, Matt, are your quarters, you said?
They're quarterly, and they're 4:30, they're 4:30 at the media room in the high school.
4:30, but we have four.
Did you say it was 4:30, Matt?
He did. 4:30.
Sorry for that, I'm going to house the case. Okay, let's see, and we're skipping D, now we're up to E, approval of the Teamsters contract.
So...
Thanks.
Did everyone have an opportunity to review the Teamsters contract that was sent out? So, you know, at this point, I'd just like to thank Mark Seavers for the time and effort he put into this contract, or, I mean, it was a lengthy process, to say the least, but I think in the end, both sides were, were happy, I mean, nobody's ever happy with the union negotiation, but I think both sides are very comfortable with the final contract, didn't you say, Mark?
Yes.
So, at this point, well, I would, I would ask for a motion in a second to approve the Teamsters contract.
Okay, how about I do that?
You got it.
Do we have a motion for approval of the Teamsters contract?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion it is.
No, wait, just, Mark, do you want to say something, I mean, there's certain things you can discuss, and some, some have to go to executive session, so...
I understand that, this is involving the vehicles, it's not personnel related, it's not salary related, it's not confidential. Cages in the cars, are they all equipped currently, with, considering the ones that will be sold after that, or the ones that will remain currently equipped?
The new ones not, yeah. According to the new contract, it's going to have to be, but we can take the cage from one of the ones we're planning to trade down.
That was my next question, whenever we get rid of one, is when we keep a cage?
We should be able to, we should be able to.
Things involving ammunition are allowed to ask questions regarding that in public?
This was, this is target practice ammunition.
Section 17, paragraph 7, yeah, training purposes, for training purposes. Okay, 17, 7, officers will be provided with 100 rounds per quarter of ammunition for the purpose of training. I thought that that was reduced, and we had discussed that at once.
That is reduced, number.
That is reduced.
We're going to be having an executive session, but it's going to, if you approve of this, it's going to be after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I have questions for executive session, but it's not, like, we're going to go back and do whatever we're changing anyway, so I just have questions.
Okay. So, let's take a vote, any other discussion before we take a vote? So, let's take a vote, any other discussion before we take a vote? Roll call, Diana?
Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Dave Fandell?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Dana Shade?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, Severs, we're up to you.
Okay. Looking for approval, everybody who's named the budget, preliminary budget two thousand nineteen, looking for approval for authorization to advertise the budget. General budget request six percent decrease from two thousand eighteen.
Say that again?
Say that last name. Six percent decrease.
Are we allowed to get involved at this point?
You are allowed, six percent decrease in that budget.
But Mark, what exactly does that mean in terms of the proposed tax?
Well, that's my second thing, I'm looking for this first, then I'll get to that next. I'm looking for approval to advertise it, and then I'll tell you the tax order.
Well, let's discuss the budget. Remember we left Finance on Thursday? The real estate tax was to bring in one point two five three million. And since then, that has been reduced to one... Has it or hasn't it now?
One point one five two.
One point one five two million. How come that was changed without being discussed at Finance Committee? What happened between Thursday and today?
Well, that's my next thing, on my next step where I'm going to do that.
Okay, let's have an answer now, why was that changed without any discussion at Finance Committee? I'm asking you, you're obviously going to change this.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm presenting, so I'll just present it now, I'm looking to authorize an advertisement for a tax source to reflect the one mil tax decrease for two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and again, I'm asking for an answer, you haven't answered my question. Why was that changed from our discussion?
Because I'm providing, I'm looking for approval from council for one mil tax decrease.
But that isn't what Finance agreed to on Thursday. Is that not correct, Dave?
I think the Finance Committee on Thursday, yes, this number was different.
Sure.
That is true.
Okay.
And...
Go ahead.
Budget is redistributed reflecting the one mil tax decrease that you obviously didn't see in the local report, because it's bold, it's right out there, it's highlighted.
What didn't I see?
Right, I am, yes.
You mean in today's preliminary budget versus what we had Thursday?
No, it was on the website on Friday, it was uploaded on the website Friday.
But that wasn't, that did not come out of Finance, that came from Mr. Sever.
But it was uploaded, the, on Friday, we uploaded it.
I think what Mark was trying to show you, Frank, was an accurate budget based on a reduction in one mil of tax. What would be the ramifications if you did approve one mil of tax, so you could see it?
Well, the only ramification that I see is the transfer to capital or capital count at the end of the year being reduced.
Well, that's because of the reduction of the tax increase.
Which begs the question, what do we do with our capital account, and why doesn't Finance sit down and talk about that? The capital count is used for long-range planning.
Well, I called Mark Friday morning and said, Mark, you know, it was an oversight on the Finance Committee's part last night. We never had an opportunity to talk about the tax ordinance, which has to be approved to be advertised, so that was at the Thursday night meeting, we have to approve to advertise the tax ordinance tonight, so we can approve it at the end of the month.
Exactly.
Right, so we never talked about it at the Finance Committee meeting.
But the taxes follow the budget. Whenever you, whenever you do your budget and come up with a bottom line spending, then you figure out what your tax is going to be, and that's what we did.
But you reflected the change for the tax mileage in...
I reflected that from the budget.
As of Thursday evening, the budget called for a tax rate of fourteen point oh five nine mils for general revenue. To complete the budget, and the resulting bottom line is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is transferred to our capital expense account. The capital expense account is impacted by long-range planning having to do with police department, it's going to need quarters, fire department may or may not be consolidated. We have equipment issues down at the maintenance shed, and all that comes out of capital equipment. Our capital surplus budget, yet we never discussed any of that, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to reduce our capital contribution by knocking a mil off of our budget. Again, that should all be discussed in Finance, that's all part of long-range planning that this borough has to do. And none of it was brought to Finance, not any of it.
Well, as Scott said, he called me Friday because it shouldn't have been brought up in Finance, and it wasn't, so we had a discussion. And then, I presented the one mil tax cut, and Diana made the changes, and it was issued to you, and it's highlighted clearly reflecting that.
As far as capital reserve, I mean, by the work of borough staff and the Finance Committee, we're going to be able to put more into capital reserve, even with the tax cut, as it is, than what council has in a decade?
That's not true.
Okay, I mean...
Because we're gonna be putting in three hundred and fifty thousand this year, which is more than they've put in in the decade, not next year.
This year.
This year, fiscal two thousand eighteen.
Right, so we're putting in eighteen, not nineteen, I was...
That was based on your actuals this year.
Right. Right. Okay, so still, my point though is, we're still gonna be able to put more money in capital reserve than what has been put in...
Right.
In here.
Nine thousand was put in last year.
And that's very significant, I believe.
Well, again, I strenuously object to budget that figures being changed after they were determined at a meeting.
Okay, so, I'm usually, I usually stay out of, that's right, my wife says don't engage, don't engage. But, in this case, here's the, here's the problem, Frank, we have to advertise this. Okay, so, we don't have Thursday night, even if we talked about it Thursday night, this coming Thursday at Finance, we're not gonna have a council meeting until the night that we get together to vote to approve it, so we have to advertise it. So, the only way we can discuss this is if you can pick us up. Can you turn that off?
Well, again, it comes to, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Well, the chicken.
I mean, the taxes are based on your spending plan, which is your budget, which is what we developed Thursday.
We never discussed taxes on Thursday night.
Well, we certainly discussed the entire budget, which, whenever you do the budget, the taxes are the last thing that you do. You develop your spending plan, you take all your revenue, and then you see how much tax you need to levy, which is what we did. And we left it at fourteen point oh five nine mils based on the budget Thursday when we broke the meeting.
Well, if we talk about...
And it appears since then, Mr. Sever has decided that the taxes need to be less.
We didn't talk about taxes at all on Thursday.
Well, no, the taxes are a forced figure.
I hear what you're saying, I do.
You force that number.
We had, we're gonna be able to contribute enough to capital, the capital count this year, we're gonna be around four hundred and fifty thousand in capital. The transfer to capital at the end of this year after Thursday night was two hundred and fourteen thousand. And we feel that two hundred and fourteen thousand, in addition to the four fifty, was this in a situation where it might be fair and equitable to the taxpayers of the borough to start maybe throttle it back, because the last increase was in two thousand twelve, it was a two mil increase, and Mark, at least half of that was to help pay for Dave Frye's retirement, because that was a big number, there was somebody else retiring too.
Bob Howard.
Bob Howard. So, that was, so that's the thinking, and we, it's kind of, like you said, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? But in this particular case, if we would add this discussion Thursday night, this is how the discussion would have gone, but we didn't, but we now have to approve the budget plus the tax ordinance. So, I don't, we're forced to have it out in the eye of the public.
And that's okay.
But that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, taxpayers are here, so, hey, I vote for that.
We, quite honestly, we discussed the two mil increase, and that's like...
We can do that.
I don't, I don't, I think we, that's...
I think that's just a little bit, it's a breath away from an emergency if we cut it by two, perhaps, so...
Makes sense if you're cutting though, you're still gaining...
Right, right, and it kind of makes sense.
You know, this isn't something, this has been going...
Don't want to go into debt later.
That's a big step.
This is a work in progress.
This is a work in progress, this started three years ago, and, you know, one of the big benefits that you're seeing this year is the the healthcare, I mean, our healthcare, we're getting tremendous savings from healthcare, and we will continue, because we just, you know, what we talked about last month, I mean, there was a real good move going into this cooperative, electric, our electric now is fixed through two thousand twenty-three, and we were to have tremendous savings coming off of electric, so now the salaries, you know, it's, it's gonna continue to go up slightly every year, so you, you know, you gotta take that into consideration, but that, right now, our healthcare, the two biggest expenses other than salaries are looking fixed for a while.
Plus the ability to quote everything, because it keeps the competition in check, brings it down, things of that nature. So, ability to buy consumables and bulbs instead of just one year, over here, over here, so a lot of that contributes to that, so like I said, this is a work in progress, so this gives something back.
It's a lot of work at a lot of levels, and people look in, you know, from the outside, and they, well, there's bickering among council, well, there's bickering among council and staff, and that, sometimes that just has to be part of it, but sometimes, this is the result.
Last question, I heard someone saying, well, we got a two mil increase because of two people that retired. Does that happen every time someone retires?
There were some now, there was also, if you remember, that was when we also formed Borough Police Department. So, there were, there was cost involved with that, but it apparently at the time, and I don't think anybody here was on that board, no. It necessitated a tax increase at that time, which never was rolled back. Okay, quite honestly, the borough, up until, up until this year, you know, you always have to have a little bit of a cushion, because we don't have a money tree on the backyard that grows dollar bills yet, we've been working on it, but we haven't come up with it yet. So, but we now are in financially pretty darn good shape with the, our capital count at the end of this year. So, that, you know, with that being said, and we're putting out a budget that the expenses, I had ten percent decrease, Mark, is that in general borough or totally, just general borough, six? I had ten percent, but...
I'm not quite there.
Okay, so we're real close, but, so we're with a, we still have a hundred and seven thousand dollar capital transfer filled into the budget with a, with a mil decrease.
Right, which is still considerably higher than previous years.
So we could see another one next year too, that possibly?
You could see a one mil increase too. You know, you never know.
Put money back in our pockets, what's the problem, I don't care.
At the same, at the same time though, you know, we have a streets department that you could replace every piece of machinery now, you know, we we can't cut taxes to where we have nothing in savings at all, I guess, is what I'm, you know, just like you're in a household.
We just have, we're just discussing, that's all.
I tell you, we're, we're, we have, we're having, this is what...
Somebody didn't know about it?
No, if you come to a Finance Committee meeting, this is what, this is what a Finance Committee meeting is like. So, we're having a Finance Committee meeting, like I said, in the eyes of the public here, so this is, this is what we're doing.
Okay.
Sometimes there's more yelling.
But if the numbers work, and you give back to the public for once, if it's with this for the borough.
Yeah, well, that's, that's...
And at this point, it is, Frank.
On your eyes.
My eyes, I'm gonna talk to them. Well, both of them are very hard work, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, Frank, anything else?
Well, again, I made my objections known, and without any long-range planning, I don't feel that we're prudent to be doing what Mr. Sever wants to do.
Sever.
But Frank, where was the long-range planning all these previous years?
We have a lot of things that are going to have to be planned next year, no question about it. We're up to paying butt quarters for the police department, looking for consolidation for the fire department, and the streets, I mean, Mark's the one that was moaning and groaning about their plow trucks not being operational, because they were so old and rotten.
So, we had one operable plow, how was that?
You know, there's a lot of things down there that need to be bought, and it all comes out of your capital account.
But my question was, council's previous to us, where was that focus then? When we've been able to put more money into capital reserve than we have in many years?
That money just just started to accumulate there lately, hasn't it, Scott?
Well, again, we had a twenty-seven percent decrease in our healthcare. You know, we just rolled that out in seventeen, where we self-funded the difference between two fifty, five hundred, and two thousand, four thousand, which is now paying majorly dividends, plus, you know, the electric cost savings that we negotiated in sixteen didn't kick in until October thirty-first of seventeen, so this was the full fiscal year that we benefited from those savings, which is locked in now to two thousand twenty-three.
So to answer your question, we haven't had this money to sit down and talk about.
Things to be working on, but now it's rolling out. And it's gonna continue to do so, I mean, I think that the time and effort by the Finance Committee put into this nineteen budget will again continue to pay dividends, I think it's a good budget, but in saying that, I still, I think that there's enough room that we can serve up a decrease.
Anyone else have points of discussion? We had a first time, a second, correct? No?
Probably did.
Oh, no, Frank just said, let's just... So...
Okay, that's right.
So we need a motion for approval of the advertisement for the two thousand nine budget.
I'll make the motion.
I was gonna say, you might as well run them both together, because they're tied together.
Oh, okay.
Well, one's an advertisement.
They're both advertisements.
They're both advertisements, but I would say they're tied together then.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to advertise the two thousand nineteen budget and the tax ordinance to reflect the one mil tax decrease in two thousand nineteen.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Frank Barrier?
No.
Dave Fandell?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
No.
Dana Shade?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, we're up to you for streets, please.
I've been called from Dealer's Choice up on Fourth Street. He wants to make the curb forty-foot long yellow in front of his place past his driveway, because he can't see to get out by the bowling alley, because if there's cars that night. He's looking for approval to do that.
Does everyone know where Dealer's Choice is, on Fourth Street there? The corner.
So, there's a house on the corner, and the yellow line, it is, the yellow line comes to about where a parking lot is for his cars. So he wants to extend that yellow line across the front of his car lot to the right side of the egress into his lot, straight at the telephone pole, right by Victory Auto.
And that's okay in terms of ordinance. We don't want to run into a situation like the rain two on Chestnut Street where we're coming back and forward going yellow zones.
No, he's, he's okay with it. I mean, it's okay with, as long as the police department knows that that is illegal to park there and that they can force the no parking.
Do you look at it, Bill?
Yeah.
You okay with it?
Yeah, you can't, you can't see it for a while. Rep's gun is up there one day. You can't see down the street, can't see what's coming up.
We have a motion. To approve that?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Looking for approval for handicap parking space at one twenty-one North Grand Street for Fred Medley. He lives with his niece. She has a garage in the back, but he can't walk from the garage to the house.
You were, did you go check, is that where we added one before, or no?
No.
Okay.
Never was one there.
Okay.
It's on the right side going up North Grand Street.
And you're good with it?
Yeah.
Motion? So approve the handicap space added to, at one twenty-one North Grand Street?
So moved. I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments at this time?
Sure. I'm sorry, Jim, she raised her head first.
Hi, my name's Ellen Keeler. I live at four forty-five South Wayne Street, and there's a street light on, it would actually be on Fleming Avenue. And I just want to say, I live the borough's responsible for the streetlights and the bulbs at them, but there was a brighter light put in that streetlight, and I just want to say thank you, because my grandson gets on the bus at six forty-five, and it was always dark, and that concerned me. So now there's light, and not only that, it cuts down on crime. I mean, the whole street is lit up, and I just want to thank whoever's responsible for that, because that's definitely a positive, and I'm sure it helps the police force when they're patrolling. And my, front of my house, the side and the back is lit up, and that makes me feel good, because my vehicle's parked there, and it just makes me feel safer. Not that the police force doesn't do their job, I see them, they're very visible, but they can't be everywhere all the time, so.
Yeah, back in two thousand and sixteen, council gave staff approval to systematically start replacing all the streetlights in the borough with LED, and that's, you happened to.
I'm telling you, I was so happy when I seen that, so thank you.
I wish Pendle, or Pendelec was just a little quicker at doing it, because it's taking us longer than it would.
It makes a huge difference. I just couldn't believe it. I mean, I have to close my, I have to close my blinds at night, but that's okay.
Anybody else? Public comments? I'm sorry, Jim, how could I forgot you?
I was wondering about the bridge on South Main Street. I see there, you know, it's obviously going to be replaced. There's a plaque on the one side of the, of the wall there, and I was wondering if there was going to be any arrangements made to preserve that plaque.
Yeah, it's going with the historical society.
Okay. Any other comments? If that's it, we will break for executive session.